I recognize being a good student for the month last month and someone said it was for being a good friend. Which is great because we can always use good friends. Alright, you want to be first?
Yes.
Alright.
What is this? My name is Steven.
What grade are you in?
I'm in first grade. My teacher's name is Mrs. Lawson. And I'm going to be a ch- I want to work at mom's office when I grow up.
My name's Cody. I'm in first grade. My teacher's name is Ms. Schultz. And I want to be a policeman when I grow up.
Hi, my name is Cora. I'm in kindergarten and my teacher is Mrs. Faulkner. And when I grow up, I want to be a baker.
My name is Michael Brass. I'm in third grade. My teacher is- and I'm a student of Mrs. Parker and I want to be a cop when I grow up.
My name, my name, my name is Nick. I'm in first grade and um. Um, I want to be, when I grow up, I want to be a teacher.
My name is Joey. I'm in second grade. My teacher's name is Mrs. Shay. I want to be a scientist when I grow up.
My name is Delaney. Kindergarten. Ms. Winnie is a teacher.
My name is Justin. I'm in second grade. Ms. Young. Cop.
My name's Mackenzie. My teacher's name is Mrs. Low. A teacher.
My name is Reese. I'm in kindergarten and my teacher's name is Mrs. Boone. And when I grow up, I want to be a vet.
Well, this evening, so I'm going to start us off. Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting of Monday, March 10th, 2014. Roll.
Mr. Dawson? Mr. Habermilth?
Here.
Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis?
Here.
And Mr. Rice?
Here.
Alright, if you please rise, we do the pledge allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
In the name of the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of British Spain. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay.
Sent this to you guys. I was gonna print it large, but I couldn't. My printer wasn't working at all.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm hoping to do.
So that's what held me up. What's that?
What happened?
My big printer, the printhead, I think just, I don't use it. I think it's, I've been using one at Colley's, not the one at home.
Oh, yeah.
It's just something that probably got discussed tonight at some point.
Alright, on to item number four, student liaison update. Mr. Habermilth?
Okay, so, the role of the student liaison is to uh, is to kinda get out and talk to folks and find out some of the good things that are going on in the school and uh, and bring folks in to talk about what they're doing and, you know, recognition and things like that. So, I have to admit, I did drop the ball this month. They had a case of basketball fever, I think, and, and neglected to go out looking for ideas. And I almost came in and then with a no report, but the more I thought about it, you know, there's a lot of great things going on and I just wanted to mention some of the things that our students have accomplished in this, this winter period. So, um, you know, a lot of folks have heard about the basketball team going to be going to regional competition on Thursday. Uh, in addition to that, we had a wrestler who placed second in the state. It's a fantastic individual accomplishment. Um, our bowling team also made a trip to state. And as well, the speech and debate kids did a great job too and had a lot of great success there. So, it's, it's a really good time for our students and our community and, and to, you know, to enjoy this together and uh, we, we've had phenomenal support from the community, phenomenal support from our student body. I think they need to be recognized just as much as the, the individuals who are competing in these events. Our student body actually did get a compliment from the Westlake Athletic Director who was very impressed with the turnout, the showing, and the behavior of our students. So that was great. Another thing I wanted to do, I wanted to share a letter. I had a, an email from a, one of my best friends in high school. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it was addressed to myself and my brother, who's the basketball coach. And, and one of the things that, you know, he said in here was uh, "I know Norwalk has been a top program for the last couple of years, but hey, they're Norwalk. They're no different than us. No fear, no awe. Take those guys down. Keep on playing for as long as you can. Win two more so I can make the road trip to Columbus. Remind your guys that people everywhere, especially those of us who wore the same uniform, but with much shorter shorts, would have loved to have, to go where you guys are going. We're taking notice and we're really proud of what you guys are doing and representing Vermillion." So, you know, not only is the community participating in this, but Vermillion transplants, folks that are everywhere across the country are following what's happening in our district. They appreciate the good things. They're proud of our students. And, and this is just one example, you know, my uh, my daughter who's in the Air Force in California, um, listened to the game the other night, you know, and I thought that was pretty cool that she could actually pull it up on the internet and listen to it. So, I know Phil, you wanted to make mention, you know, the fire department. They gave us a nice escort.
To compliment the fire department and the police department that was also there, especially though the fire department that gave the team the escort through town after they won the game. They went out of their way, obviously. It was late at night. They didn't have to, to be out there, but they took it upon themselves in their own time. Rodney Johnson, who's the custodian at the high school, and his son Eric Johnston, who was a coach for one of our football teams, actually was there to meet the kids over at Colley's. Took them all the way through town, through Main Street and down to Sailorway Drive. So, it was a fantastic event for the community and I too would want to piggyback on what you said about the rest of the events and not just to recognize the one sport, but recognize them all as well as the academic challenge. We do truly have a lot of great things going on in the community and a great, a lot of great things with the kids and just a lot of school spirit going on right now. The, the basketball cheer section, I, what they call them, the Vermillion Nation, is it?
Vermillion Basketball Nation.
Yeah, Vermillion Basketball Nation.
BBN.
They actually got mentioned, I think, in the USA Today. There was a link to it. So, that was amazing. So, fantastic. And there was a video clip there and they interviewed a couple of our fans and, so our fans are known throughout the country right now. So, that's amazing.
That's right.
All that being said, I have, I did have a parent make a suggestion to me the other night. And, and I think on behalf of our students, something to consider. Thursday, the game's at 6:15. It takes a while to get there. I would like you to consider taking some hard decisions out of spring activity coaches' hands and cancel everything going on Thursday. Let, don't, don't, don't make these kids practice till 4:00 or 4:30 and try to race to Bowling Green. That's it.
Alright, thank you, Chris.
Yeah, one, one other quick thing. You did mention the time, but let's say that one more time because this does get broadcast, broadcasted out. That's 6:15. Bowling Green is, is the location and that's the Sweet Sixteen, Final Sixteen. So,
And tickets are available at the school?
And they are. They're, that's the other thing that I wanted to add as the last thing. Tickets are on sale. They're six dollars each and those are available all the way up through Thursday at noon. So, anyone can buy those tickets.
And are they eight dollars at the gate?
I believe they are.
If you wait till you get there, I think they're eight, so.
You know, Chris, too, you know, when you talk about accomplishments, you know, just like you said, there was several kids that placed at state in speech and debate this year.
Right.
And if you take a look also, leading scores for both women and men came out of this senior class.
That's true.
Those will be records that may not be broke for a long time. So, it's some pretty exciting things that happened this, this, this school year.
Absolutely.
This fall, this winter, I should say.
It's been a lot of fun.
But yeah, it's been pretty exciting.
Helped us get through the winter.
Yeah.
And then they're trying to get a spirit bus together, is that?
We are taking, they announced that, hopefully at the high school today was the first announcement, students can sign up. And we'll fill as many buses as we have students. So, hopefully we have ten buses.
Okay.
To go out there, so.
Very good.
Is that an option for parents or is that not?
It's, it's students only because of, we really can't put the parents unfortunately or non-family, non-students on the bus because of liability, but we are sending a spirit bus out for the middle school as well. So, that's middle school and high school.
Nice.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to number five, legislative update. Mr. Hardy?
There's not much going on in the state in Columbus. The only thing that seems to be happening down there is the House Bill 416, which covers the calamity days. And after reading this several times, the Senate tweaked House Bill 416 a little bit. Authorizing calamity days to be lengthened in half-hour increments, permitting school districts to update contingency plan, including what they call blizzard bags, which is stuff going home that the kids can do if they're out of school for a long, long period of time. Went back to the House. The House turned that version down, so nothing has been done as far as the calamity days. And the House was to meet again in two days to schedule a hearing to go over it again. So, may not happen. We'll have to wait and see. May have to make those days up when it's all said and done. That's it.
Alright, item number six. Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Recognition of Stacy Wilthing, the Sailorway PTO president, who was chosen as the Ohio Middle Level Association's Parent of the Year for 2013-2014 school year.
So, I, before we clap, sorry. I had the opportunity to go to a conference at the Ohio Middle Level Association that represents all the schools in our state in grades four through eight. So, at that conference, Stacy, we nominated Stacy because of the work she's been doing with our PTO this year. She's really organized our group. We have really grown the number of parents that are involved in activities at our school. And she's just done a wonderful job in organizing events. Even, I mean, another one's this week. We have the Dome Theater coming and with contributions from the PTO, we're able to send all of our fourth and fifth grade students into the gym where there will be an inflatable IMAX theater where they can go and kind of experience some different programs. So, she's done a wonderful job for us and just her entire group. So, while it's her award, it really goes to the entire, entire PTO at Sailorway. They've done phenomenal this year and we're really proud of their work. It was also, it had a little levity to it. When they gave Stacy the award and I accepted on her behalf, there were a lot of funny looks on me being a Stacy. So, so again, Stacy, thank you so much for everything that you've done. And if you can come up now, we can clap and I'll.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm very humbled and honored.
For those of you who don't know, as Mr. Zeller. Okay, on to item number seven, public participation. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak? Okay, scene nine. We'll move on to number eight, reports. We'll start with the treasurer's report.
For my report, first thing I'd like to do is mention a kind of an issue that's been going on and I don't know how the community knows about delinquent property taxes in the district. Currently, as of the end of 2013, the district gets owed $730,000 in delinquent property taxes. And that's a big chunk of money. I kind of informally polled some of the other districts in Erie County and I polled Perkins and Margarita and they're over a million dollars that they're owed by their district. And, you know, we're all in, in financial crunches in education and unfortunately, this is a, this is a pool of money that is owed to the district, but we have a tough time collecting it because we as a school district can't go out and force people to pay taxes. You know, we need law enforcement's help and, and a kind of an overall change in mindset at the county level to help us collect that revenue. On the second side of this, Erie County and the commissioners, a number of years ago formed a land reutilization corporation. And I think there's roughly seventeen in the state. Erie County happens to be one, though, that isn't funded by any type of property tax dollars. It's privately funded. They've been able to put together this land bank on about a hundred thousand dollars. And what they do is they go and look at vacant properties that either are dilapidated. It could be, the easy example is you drive down to Sandusky City and maybe you have, where the houses are real close to each other, maybe you have about a half of a lot there that's just empty. There's no use for it, but it's in someone's name. You can't build anything on it. The city would come in, maybe make an offer, and they try to attach that lot to one of the other parcels to make it valuable, whether it becomes then someone's yard or whatever it may be. But, but that's kind of in essence what the land reutilization corp's gonna do. They're, they're gonna look at vacant properties that no one's paying taxes on and they're gonna try to acquire them legally. They've currently rehabbed twenty-six properties. We have one in Vermillion that they've rehabbed. From my basic understanding of this property, it was given to the city and it's adjacent to a park. I don't know if anyone knows where that is. I don't. But that was just kind of background on the one piece of property.
It's, it's all for his auto parts.
There are ten properties that are in progress right now. Of those, two happen to be in Vermillion. The, what they're proposing to do is they're gonna look at taking the fines that are associated with delinquent properties. The county, when they assess fines, they do it twice a year. And I think Erie County is set up at three percent right now. So, if you don't pay your property taxes, after about a month, you'll be assessed that fine of three percent on whatever you owe. And, and then if you wouldn't pay it in the second half, you'll be assessed a fine again, plus interest. And I think the, the two things that the county commissioners can do, they can assess it at three percent or ten percent. If they were doing this, I would be pushing that they go up to ten because it, it helps them out and it keeps, unfortunately, it, it makes sure that we retain all of that $730,000 that we're owed as a district. I came from Lucas County as a treasurer in Lucas County and Lucas County has had this land bank instituted up there for years upon years. Unfortunately, in the district I came from, they had rehabbed one property. The majority of the properties were in inner-city Toledo. And I lost to the tune of about $60,000 in revenue with that, which as a treasurer, again, it goes back to, you know, schools needing money. About $60,000 is a lot of money. That's, you know, a teacher's salary and benefits for a year. And I, I can guarantee that I did not see $60,000 in benefit from the one, one property they rehabbed in my district. When I met with the county commissioners to propose going towards this fine and fee structure and removing that, they invited all superintendents and treasurers in the county. The majority of districts were represented in Erie County at the meeting. Perkins was, was adamantly against this. I, I'm, I'm swaying a little more towards because they are rehabbing properties in Vermillion. That's a good thing. We want to see these properties be rehabbed. The unfortunate part is that the majority of them are still in Sandusky City, which is, is, is kind of my feeling of how I came out of Lucas County. It was in inner-city Toledo. It wasn't touching the outlying districts. But at least they're making an attempt at the commissioner level to try, try to equalize everything, to have properties rehabbed, at least in our school district. The one thing I'll say is that we as a board, we as a school district, even the voters, don't have any push or play in this. It's basically the commissioners get to decide how they want to fund it and, and put it out there. So, it's more of an FYI because I don't feel that we have a lot of power outside of potentially pushing for some help at collecting these, but starting this process up may actually move them to, to start working at these that are severely delinquent properties by trying to acquire them, rehab them, and then get them back out there. Questions, comments, thoughts?
I know, Ryan, before we talked about how we can kind of push the county to, to try to collect some of these delinquent taxes. I don't know if we could write a letter or?
Yeah, we talked about that and I think, you know, working with some of the other treasurers that are, you know, this is a problem that is obviously county-wide and maybe as a, as a group of, of school entities and school districts within the county, come together and say, "Hey, it's time to start working towards collecting these," whether it's evict, evictions or, or going after or moving it to the land bank, whatever it is to get the process rolling. Moving on to my financial report. February ended a little worse than I had expected and the real reason behind that is that I was missing about $2 million in, in property tax revenue that I had received the previous February. So, my numbers were a little bit skewed. On the revenue side, it was down about $2 million comparatively to where I was last year at this time. On the expenditure side, I'm, salaries are still running about $217,000 behind last year's, which is a good thing. Benefit expenses are unfortunately up, $237,000. You know, no surprise without where healthcare's going. We, you know, had to take into effect the, the premium increase over this past year. And, and unfortunately, that's caused a big portion of the increase. Purchase services are up by about $90,000. A large portion of this is utilities. And a lot of the typical homeowner stuff that you're gonna see go up throughout, you know, over a year period. Supply purchases were down $157,000, but on the other side of things, equipment purchases were up. In all, we are currently deficit spending year-to-date by about $480,000. But, keep in mind, if I would have had that $2 million in property tax revenue, we would have been, had a surplus of about one and a half million. So, it really hinges on that key factor. It, it really is just kind of a matter of time when that came in. I actually received it in, last week in early March. So, I recouped the $2 million. It just didn't come when I thought it was gonna come. And where we are, looking at a thirteen-month spread of the, of the district, you can see last month was our worst month, which I kind of alluded to last meeting. In February is the second to worst month on there as you look at over a thirteen-month period. Looking at True Days Cash, where we ended for the year, we're up slightly from last month. We have 235 True Days cash in our, in our coffers. And remember, that's, should we cease to collect revenue, we can sustain ourselves at 235 days, so. Revenue and revenue expended, and then as a percentage of salaries and benefits, were opposite of deficit, like I said. So, we, we're at 103%. For the year, as I look across this, this graph, you want to be at 100% or lower because that's the nature of our business. You know, we're not here to make money, but we're not here to lose money. On the expenditure, on the salary and benefit side, 73% of our expenditures were related to salary and benefit costs. And we, that's a favorable percentage as salary and benefit expenditures go. Estimate-wise, unfortunately, I was estimating that I get my $2 million in property taxes, so my estimate is pretty far off for this month, but it's a, it's a growing process. And as I look at it on the expenditure side, I'm a little bit better than last month, but I'm, expenditures were slightly higher than what I was anticipating. One final note, on a positive note, and I don't like to brag, but on Thursday, I was elected to be the president of the Northwest Ohio Association of School Business Officials. And so, I get to represent Vermillion, starting July 1st till June 30th, as the president from here to Williams County and about as far south as Findlay. So.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's awesome.
That was great.
So, with that, I'm asked for your approval of the report, which includes my review that I just gave of the February financial reports and then to approve last month's financial reports as both presented in your packet.
I'll second.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Habermilth?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Item three, I ask that you approve the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor as presented in attachment C.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. Habermilth?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And item four, I'm recommending a resolution to approve the fundraisers presented below in accordance to policy 5830.
I'll move. I'll second.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Habermilth?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
A short discussion about that.
We should have already, before we.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna say. There's a calendar at your, at your desk, at your. Yeah, that's what I was going to say. There's a calendar at your desk, at your table, and it's color-coded, and you can see... This gives a pretty graphic illustration of how many fundraisers we have going on, minus the ones that we just approved right this minute. And I think that the hope was that... Well, we've just approved them, so it's okay.
I was going to say, nothing's changed, is really where we're at.
Yeah, and maybe we wanted to look at a couple of these and say, perhaps, there's too much. I don't know. Some of these, though, are going on in August. For example, the band boosters, Lake Erie Crushers, are happening in August, so that's not really affecting this calendar here, but...
It was my understanding, when we were looking at this, that we were going to find some of those events that are really great fundraisers, and everybody would participate in those fundraisers. And that's just not happening.
Well, you know, our change in policy is fairly recent, and I think until we do find some of those opportunities, until we do get some kind of a strategy behind it, that unless someone is really out of line with their requests, I think we need to continue to allow them to do some fundraising to support their groups.
So what have we done to take control of that? Have we had any meetings? There are certain things we know for a fact that do really, really well.
Yeah, there have been... The athletic directors met with the coaches, and there is... I really agree with Chris or Mr. Habermill about this. It's going to take a little bit of time to get used to the fact that these fundraisers have to come into us a little bit earlier. There's got to be more discussion about them. One just came in today. They're not used to the routine yet, and then there's got to be more of a central coordination from the athletic director and the band boosters to say, "What can we do to get together for a bigger event, like a spaghetti dinner that we would hold for multiple groups?" So it's just getting started right now. We'll get better at this. But now that they're being forced to put this on the calendar, they're being forced to bring the approval to us first, it is starting to rein it in some. I know that they've come to the athletic director, the principal, and myself, worried that, "Is this going to be accepted? Were these going to get approved this time? Did they make the deadline?" So it is working, but not quite the way we'd like to see it yet. Give it a little bit more time yet, I think, and we'll get better at it.
Well, and I think as we move along, we can encourage groups to plan a little better, because, you know, you can see on here that a couple of these fundraisers are actually starting today, right?
Exactly.
So I think they're hedging on the fact that we're going to approve, but, you know, going forward, if folks know that, "Hey, I got to get this in," you know, then maybe they'll plan months in advance. Because, I mean, I really appreciate the fact that the band boosters are throwing something at us for August. I mean, that's good notification and planning.
And a lot of these are in-house things, like Saylorway Middle School pennies for patient stride. A lot of these are pretty small things that I don't think we have a lot to worry about with what we just approved, but we'll get better at this.
And I think one of our other concerns was they were hitting up all the local businesses, too. Is there someone that's kind of keeping track of that and looking these over as they come in?
Well, by putting them on the calendar, I believe that this is going to help the principals, the athletic directors, everybody start to visualize all of this now, and realize who's going out for what.
Okay.
And that will happen. We'll start to rein all of this in and say, "That's too much."
Well, to play on Shelley's point, I think that should be kind of the focus of this, you know, the business part of it, to make sure we're not...
That was our biggest concern, is that we don't want the businesses to be hit up for multiple issues.
So that should be something, maybe on the, "Are you hitting up the businesses in town, you know, on this, so we know how many are actually going out to..."
Does the approval form, and I can't remember off the top of my head, does the approval form ask for any detail on how the money will be raised?
It does.
Okay, so we should be able to gather that from there.
They have to give a description. We'll scrutinize it more. At this next board meeting, there will be some more things that will come up, and I think that we can, at that time, start to get a little bit more aggressive with the board and with them to say, "Look, this is what we already have going on. Let's start to..." And hopefully, as you said, they'll come in a little bit sooner, and we can have those discussions with them even before that. So it's a start.
Yeah.
Before you move on, too, can I make a suggestion, too? Can we possibly, as you're moving through the agenda, we'll skip the superintendent's report, do the consent agenda, then come back to that, because we have an employment action that can be taken, and then we can make... move on with that a little bit, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Item five, I recommend a resolution in compliance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 9.32, to award the contract for the Vermillion High School and Middle School renovation project, in the total amount, and this is a correction from what's on the agenda, of $3,105,500, to RFC Contracting, Inc. This amount includes the following alternates, and it's going to include everything listed there but the removal of number five for $56,000, and the removal of number six for $10,000.
Why are those being removed?
There needs to be some more discussion amongst the board about those two items, and...
What's the one for 122? What is... I guess, let's go ahead and make the motion, then we can...
I'll move.
Yeah, I'll second. We can have a discussion about it.
I've got a list of all of what they are.
Do you have the spreadsheet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we have the alternates and stuff.
I still don't see whether...
I see 122 right there.
Okay.
Because this is what we're doing.
Okay, just the... Is that only the bleachers? Can't be that. Or is that also the church? Or is that the 122?
I think so.
The 122, is that just the bleachers?
Can I see the spreadsheet?
Yeah, the 122 is the motorized bleachers at the high school.
Yeah, that's just that item.
Okay.
But we budgeted for that, and we're fine with that being in this phase, and we know that we've accounted for plenty of... We know that we're still doing the music renovations, and I'll be talking about that tonight. That's not going to be affecting things that we know we have to dedicate dollars towards, like the music room renovations. So despite the fact that those bleachers were not originally in this, we did put it into this phase, because we knew that the dollars would be available.
Okay. But you can't start the music room, really, until you move the...
Correct. And I'll have that discussion with you guys tonight to explain a little bit of...
So we're not approving that at this point either? Okay. All right. Because we need to get that music stuff done before...
Yeah, we can't do the music... Some of the music... Some of the music room renovations we'll be doing, which I'll go over tonight, but some of it, we can't until we move the weight room.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mrs. Zinnis?
Yes.
All right, we're going to skip over the superintendent's report for a second and come back to that, and move on to item number nine, the consent agenda. I guess I read through all of these. Is that...
If you want to pull off the one employment action, because he's here tonight, and we can recognize him. And that's Mr. Sexton.
So go ahead and pull up all the others.
Why don't you add that as part of your superintendent's report?
I could do that, too, if you want. If you wanted...
Let's go back to superintendent's report.
Are you going to pull them off the consent agenda altogether?
After you introduce what we can avoid, just happen to the consent.
However you want to do it, it's fine.
Do it that way? Go back and... Is that okay with you?
That's fine, sure.
All right, we're going to go backwards now, and instead of doing the consent agenda, we're going to go back to superintendent's report first.
Let me put him up at the front of the agenda. I'm going to switch these things around then. At this time, we have some employment action, and that was letter J, and we had the approval of a one-year limited classified contract for 2013-14 to Mark Sexton for the position of custodian step one. And Mark, would you... It's been a tradition now that we bring new employees up to meet the board, talk a little bit about themselves. So if you wouldn't mind coming on up for just a few minutes, tell us a little bit about your background, what you've been doing, where you're from, how you've got the position. Just let us get to know you a little bit.
Up to the mic, if you don't mind. You know, I know almost all of you, right? Yep. From back in the day. Nice to meet you. Thank you. Chris, yes. Sorry. Mark.
Good evening. My name is Mark Sexton. I have been a Vermillion community member for 42 years. I was born and raised here. My family is a family-owned business, Aerial Electronics Subtown. I've worked there since I was 19 years old. I've been there for 23 years, and now I'm parting ways and coming to work for Vermillion's project. I have two children, Austin, which is 17 now, and Mikayla is 12. Mikayla is in the sixth grade, and Austin is studying culinary arts at E. Hope. Very excited about that. I'm a single dad of two, working two jobs. My mother is still here in Vermillion. My father is still here in Vermillion. My whole family is here in Vermillion. I serve the community with the churches, Lakeview Baptist Church, First Baptist Church. I heard about this job opening through just some internet access, and thought I would go ahead and take a chance. And I've been doing substitute work for these fine people and these fine institutions for about a year now, and I've met a lot of nice people, and I actually enjoy the work, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Anything good in the work?
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Hopefully, it's always nice to see people in the community that take part and work in our community and work here, so it's always a positive, so.
Very good. I'm going to switch up the order of things here a little bit. Actually, I'll take number one as number two next, and Mr. Harding already mentioned the calamity day plan, and it was more the non-plan so far at the state, or what's not happening at the state, or what did and then fell apart. And there was some talk, as he said, that there was going to be up to four days, with the possibility of a couple of professional days for teachers, and then a couple of days that would be dedicated towards just getting the student work back together. As you know, every year, the board adopts a calendar that has a contingency plan, and that contingency plan includes the ability for us to make those days up at the end of the year. So as of now, unless the state changes the plan and comes back to us, and the governor is able to push that bill through, we will be making those days up after the... in June, at the end of the school year. I'm sure that the students in here and back at the schools aren't thrilled to go those extra days, but that's the only alternative we have for now. We will be talking, though, with the teachers' union, and we will be talking with the classified staff. We'll be seeing if there's any alternatives or any options. We'll see what we can work out.
This does not affect graduating seniors, though.
It will not.
How many do we owe right now?
No, they'll still graduate on time. We've got a total of eight days. We're three over at this point. But a storm's coming, I heard, too, so we'll see.
Is that over yet?
You never know.
Might have booked the whole summer here.
And according to the Farmer's Almanac, there's supposed to be one at the end of the month, too.
Oh, really?
So we'll see. See how that goes.
It's been a fun year.
It's been a challenge. So thanks for doing your report. Mr. Harding, that's just a little bit of an addition, about more information on the calamity days. All right, the next thing I'd like to jump to would be the safe routes to school. I'm just going to read from a document. James Williamson is our operations director, who attended a meeting with the city on the safe routes to school, and these are some of the notes that was available from him about the safe routes to school. Vermillion Local School District is embarking on a plan to consolidate all students onto one campus, as we all know, that's currently shared by Saylorway Middle School and Vermillion High School along Saylorway Drive in Sanford. Since the Vermillion Elementary School, we vacated all safe routes to school. Countermeasures associated with that school were eliminated from that consideration. So this plan had to change around a little bit due to the fact that we consolidated. The eighth-grade students are presently located at Vermillion High School and will stay there at the high school. Vermillion is submitting several projects that were approved in prior rounds of funding, but due to budgetary constraints, are unable to be funded. The approved projects being submitted are sidewalks on Devon Drive, sidewalks on Driftwood Drive, sidewalks on Saylorway between Sanford Street and the football stadium, sidewalks on Vermillion Road from Liberty to Dorothy, and the Douglas-Saylorway pedestrian signal. In addition, Vermillion is requesting funding for repairing and filling gaps in sidewalk systems on the south side of Liberty, east of Vermillion River, and replacing widening sidewalks on the north of Liberty Avenue from Decatur to the west city limit. Speed limits for the streets are as follows: Saylorway Drive, 25 miles and 20 miles per hour during restricted hours; Devon Drive, 25 miles an hour; Driftwood Drive, 25 miles an hour; Vermillion Road, 25 miles an hour; Liberty Avenue, east of River Road, 35 miles an hour; and Liberty Avenue, west of Decatur, is 45 miles an hour. So that's just an update. Those were the notes that were taken by Mr. Williamson at the safe routes to school, and that hopefully brings you up to date as to what we're doing with that program. We'll continue working with the city, and those sidewalks will be a good addition once the campus is in, and make it more safe for kids.
Is there any priority to those, as far as...
I don't know exactly what the timeline is. I know that there was a concern about the Sanford one especially.
I was going to say, I was hoping that would be top one.
Yeah, I think what... I did call the mayor the other day to ask her about that one, and she told me that they've got to get the street in first. As soon as they get the street in, then they'll do the sidewalk.
Okay.
Any more questions about safe routes?
No, that's great.
Okay. All right. The next item that I have on my report is the security meeting. We started talking about this at the last board meeting for just a little bit. We've set a date of April 16th, which is a Wednesday night. That'll be at 6:30 PM. We met with our administrative team and had an extensive discussion about what we have available in the schools. We took the wish list that the custodians created in all the buildings. We talked about what we think is possible in terms of upgrades, and in terms of what we've done, what's worked well, what needs to be done better. The thought is, though, to get out to the community and think about the possibility of asking the community whether they would support a tax issue for a additional half a mil, quarter mil. I'm not sure what we would determine it would be, and see whether or not some money needs to be dedicated more towards the security of buildings.
Well, it's up to the community. They got to decide what they want to spend.
Correct.
It's as simple as that. We got to... This is up to us, as a community, to decide. You know, school safety is something that was never really thought of until after all these things have happened. And, you know, anything we spend on school safety takes away from education for our kids, so... And we can continue to do that, take away from the education of our kids, but that's a hard thing to do, to, you know, cut teaching jobs and programs to provide for safety, so...
We will advertise this. We will put an agenda out there very soon. We're still working with our team. We'll put the draft out to the board, let you take a look at the draft before we advertise it. But we want to make sure that we invite the community and get as many people out as we can, get the word out that this is about the safety of students, get their input. And so we will start to get heavily involved in the advertising and marketing. And so we will start to get heavily involved in the advertising and marketing of that idea that we want to bring people into here, what they have to say.
Will it be at the high school auditorium?
That's the high school auditorium, correct. Thanks.
Just to be clear, though, your comment about, you know, anything we spend on safety and security takes away from education, excuse me, the new legislation, though, does allow it to be standalone, right? And then, so it does generate revenue that can be standalone for security.
If, if we were to ask for new monies.
Right.
Yeah. And then those funds would never be reallocated by this treasurer or treasurer in the future.
Just wanted to reiterate that that is, you know, it is earmarked for that.
And that's what we gotta decide as a community, and you know, and I think it can be done foreb, forebly, really. I mean, you know, so.
You told us, and I don't know if we reported that out at the last board meeting, what a one mil generates. Is it in the $430,000 range?
Yeah, in the, in the low four hundreds currently.
Per $100,000? Or no, it was actually, I'm mixing two things. A $100,000 house was $35 a year annually, I believe, so.
At one mil.
At, at one mil.
That's a big levy. I don't think we're need anything near that. Is that, that one levy for X money years or?
I think the, I think the premise of the safety and security levies functions somewhat like an emergency levy.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a period of up to five years that you can place this on the ballot. And I think you are, I think they cap it at one mil, so, and as you alluded to, it's, it can only be used for safety and security upgrades. It can't be used for paying teachers or buying textbooks. It's upgrades to safety and security in the district.
The, the balance that we have to strike as a board, as you know, and the message that we have to get out about this is, if we do decide to do this, that is money that we go and ask the taxpayer for, and we're hoping to keep an operating levy away from us for a good, long time. Right now, we're looking at 2017, and if we can keep going past that, that's terrific. But eventually, there might be the need that we do have to come back out there to the community. And then the problem becomes, no matter whether you ask for a mil or half a mil or a quarter mil, then the community says, well, we just, we just did this not that long ago. Now you're asking us for additional funds again. And so that will be money whenever, at whatever time that will be needed, and we're hoping that that's not going to detract from that request at the time. And we'll do everything we can in our power at that time as a board to say, we've been good stewards with the money. We've done, we've consolidated down to one campus. We've saved as much money as we can. But I'm just pointing that out, that that's going to be a challenge for us when and if the time comes.
Well, at this point, we're not there, so.
Right.
You know, and it's up to the community to decide whether or not we want to move forward with something like this. And so hopefully, these community meetings will come out with some good ideas and make some recommendations to you, and then we can move forward. If not, then, you know, we'll just have to do the best we can.
Right. Okay, any other questions about that?
Option of getting grants for that, just having grant money come in for security.
We're always looking at those options and opportunities. There was a radio grant, for example, that was out there that we could write for that could have provided radios to the district. But I think that along with some of those grants, there's a lot of other things that are attached to it that make it unproductive for us or doesn't make it realistic to do. So we'll take each one of those as a possibility. We'll look at it and we'll determine whether or not we think it's worth to apply for or or not, but we'll, we'll keep our eyes open. If there's any way we can get extra money by writing a grant, that's a fantastic way to do it.
Phil, it'd be really great if, you know, before this meeting, you could put together a community members or get together a group that could just do a school walkthrough so they can see how the entry works now and, and they can, you know, you know, I think that, you know, letting the community members see, you know, what we're doing for school safety now would be beneficial to that meeting.
Okay, we can think about what that might need to look like.
And they can maybe see, make some recommendations based upon what they see.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm thinking about what that might look like. Let me talk to our administrative team, whether or not that needs to be done before school, during school, after school. I don't know for sure what that needs to look like. We'll have to talk about it. I could put it out in the weekend review as to what it might.
It doesn't have to be a hundred people. It could be just, you know, half a dozen people and get some recommendation from them, what they think, you know.
Sounds good. We'll start.
And outside, set eyes, you know.
Very good. All right. Any other questions on that security issue? All right, the last item that I have on superintendent's report is facility update. Let me just tell you a little bit first about what's going on with the new elementary school, and then I've got a lot of slides to walk through, you, walk through with you. And I'll go through those as fast as possible through the first two phases. It's the third phase that we need to have quite a bit of discussion on, so I'll try to get through those first two phases quickly. So as far as the new elementary school goes, the masonry continued whenever possible over last month, and the mason was able to complete the second floor computer closet and the bearing walls and the office areas. The sail wall at the main entrance has been poured and stripped and it's ready for structural steel. The floor mechanical pads and curbs were poured on the second floor, and the area is now ready for bar joists and the metal decks to be installed. So they're moving along, not as fast as they'd like, but it's going. The plumber and the electricians continued roughing in the walls, and the plumber also installed the drains onto the second floor. HVAC units will be set on the second floor this week. Iron workers will return the week of the seventeenth to continue the structural steel raising. And I think once the weather warms up, the plan was to get one of those steel beams out and let the kids and the community come and sign it. So we'll get a beam out there as soon as we can and hopefully we'll put an area out there that won't be full of mud and we'll get a way for the community to come and sign. And finally, the general contractor has filed for a weather delay in December and January. We've also been put on notice that the contractor would be filing for a weather delay in February. The architects reviewing the delay claims and will be making a decision on how many days the contractor's going to be entitled to. So that really doesn't affect us financially, that delay, but what we have to keep an eye on is to open it. We have to make sure that those delays are not going to somehow push us past our opening projected date of Christmas, because if it does, that makes it very difficult.
At that point, it's not possible.
Well, it becomes challenging, for sure.
I feel that would be fair.
I wouldn't say not possible, but I would say it's more, more and more challenging because you gotta get the teachers and the staff then to move on a weekend. It's, it's really hard, and we prefer not to do that. All right, I'm gonna step up to the.
It would basically push you back to spring break, really, is what we'd have to do. Spring break would be the time in which, you know, it's a lot of stuff to move.
Yeah, I don't know, that, that, I don't know about that. We'll have to have that discussion. I, I don't know. I'd hate to, I'd hate to have to do that. We could, hopefully that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I know, fun with it.
All right, I'm gonna step up to the screen here, and I'm gonna go through the slides quickly. This gives you an idea of what's been bid so far and what the phases are. And stop me if I'm talking too fast, but I want to try to get through these few phases In phase one, which we're planning on completing in the summer of 2014, and this is at the high school, exterior doors and window replacements, including twelve new windows. I think we're gonna need to turn the light off, because you can't.
Yeah, you can't see anything.
But the problem is when you turn the lights on, it doesn't.
That's good.
Doesn't really show very good on the camera. That's a really bad picture, but this is, this is the north end of the building where the art room is, and then this section out here is where the counseling offices are. There's gonna be new windows that are gonna be put in to match the windows that are there. And then there's gonna be new windows on the north end where that art, there's an art room down there, and there's a, was an old shop. So new windows will be put down there. So there's gonna be twelve new windows that will be in that area. Bleacher replacement. Our bleachers are at the point where they needed to be replaced. They're not motorized. There's a lot of labor. Take the labor factor out of it. It's, it's really a danger to the workers when they're pushing those in and out. If you've ever watched, it takes about five to six of them to push them in, and it's not real healthy for them to be doing it, because half the time, they walk around, walk out of there with a wrench back or something, and you feel bad to watch them push them. So it's, they're really getting bad. They need to be replaced. They'll be, they will be replaced with a plastic bleacher. If you were at the Westlake game, it would be similar to that, but even nicer than those. The platform will be a plastic laminate instead of the wood that you saw over in Westlake, so ours will be even nicer than those. And so that needs to be done.
And, and add, there'll be ADA compliant?
Correct, yeah. There'll be, there'll be the railings, there'll be wheelchair accessible, there'll be the aisles that you can walk up and down that we don't have now. This is the vocal music room, and what you're looking at there are risers. This is a very big room, and for us to reclaim that space to be able to use, there's over 2,000 square foot of space that is available in this room. So we'll be able to take those risers out, and that was bid into that first phase. So that, that's that room. Stop me anytime you have questions. In phase one, there's also going to be upgrades to the kitchens. In the front part of this kitchen, this is all going, this whole serving line is coming out. It's horrendous. It's, it's the original. None of the, hardly any of the warming trays work. We'll be getting all new equipment that will get pushed out and actually be in this area here. So it will come out farther.
Good idea.
And it will allow for a college-style service of the kitchen area, which will be better for the students, and they'll feel more like they could go in there and grab what they want, when they want, and it will be open more during more of the day.
How you gonna close it off?
There'll be, there'll be a section that's self-serve around the corner. So this is around this corner here. These doors are coming off here, and there'll be a corner that will be a self-serve section, and the rest of the things that will be out in the front will just not be used. They'll clean them up and they'll have a self-serve area. So they'll have a real nice vending area that they can use full-time, all the time. There's gonna be interior lighting, including classrooms, gym, and auditorium, and I'm glad Mr. Dawson's not here to see this picture right now, because I'd be getting scolded for kids hitting baseballs on the floor. So these lights that you see up here are outdated. Every, all the lights in all the rooms are going to get updated and energy efficient. So you've got the round lights that'll all come out, so that entire gym area will get redone. So that's part of the energy savings that you voted on tonight. So most, everything that you saw was voted on in this first phase tonight and taken care of. Any questions about the lights?
Yeah, it's just, I'd like to make one recommendation, and I brought this up, I'll talk about it later.
In phase one, site improvements, including exterior site and just discharge lighting and 300 feet of sidewalk. So this is not a real good picture here, but here's Sailor Way Drive, and there's gonna be a sidewalk that connects all the way down through here. So the kids will be able to walk through that area. It's gonna be really nice, because around the whole campus, this building, the middle school, and the new school, there'll be new lights on stanchions with twenty, they'll be 24-foot high with the LED lighting, and it will be just gorgeous around the campus. And the kids will be able to see as they're coming through. Adults will be able to see, it would be much nicer than what we have now.
Correct.
So that's what you voted on tonight as well. That's phase one. This is also part of phase one. Rooftop units, similar to what they look like, those rooftop units will have some new high-efficient air conditioning units that will be placed in, to the high school, including the gym. That air, that gym will become air-conditioned as well. Okay, part of phase one also.
Will that be done by graduation?
No, that won't be done unless it's by this graduation.
That is so hot.
No, sorry. Okay, middle school, part of phase one as well. So this are some of the things that you voted on tonight. There's a lot, if you look closely at some of the tuck pointings, some of the masonry walls need to have some grouting to be done between the walls. They call that tuck pointing. All of the brick work will be taken care of. When you're looking at those outside entrances, these do not any longer comply with ADA or they don't comply with the safety and fire codes. There's going to have to be a rail system that has to be added to each one of these entrances, exits. They're not really entrances.
Is that why you're having the water problems as well?
Yeah. And that, that was what was set up here, too. This is the west wall, which we have a problem with. All of this is going to be waterproofed. So this, they'll begin work on this at the spring break. So this will get dug up here and replaced with a drain that will be connected out into the football field, area, practice football field area. And then it doesn't show here, but the south wall has the waterproofing done as well. Doors have to be replaced. There's the wall that will be waterproofed as well, too. So all along the back wall here, that waterproofing takes place, railings, and it does have a pump that will be regulated that will make sure that that water stays away from the foundation. Bleacher replacement. If you want to look, look at really our biggest need for bleachers to be replaced, it's there. It's, those are really in much worse condition.
For dangers.
Than the high school. But those high school bleachers were heading that way, so we felt that now that we had the money to do this project, this was the time. Motorized bleachers will take place at the middle school as well. Same thing, they'll be of the same material, plastic material. Colors will be purple, school colors. It will be nice. Kitchen upgrades, same thing there, that, that will be taken out. It will be more of a college-style service area. That partition or that sliding door there will not be there any longer. They'll upgrade the serving line. Kids will be able to go and get food much quicker, much more efficiently, and will work out better for students. We pointed the floor areas out before. There's an example of some of the buckling that occurs in the floors, and that will all get torn out, that corried tile, and be replaced with a high-quality, long-lasting porcelain tile.
That's because of the water problems, correct? That's why that's buckling?
No, what they say really, well, they, they say that it's just age, and it's just not particularly, well, part of it can be considered that, but it's more just age, and it just happened over time.
You were over there grant, right?
Yeah, a lot of movement.
Yeah.
Lot of movement in that building.
Hopefully, it's all settled by now, and when we go to redo this.
Once you get all that drainage and all that stuff in there, that's gonna.
That'll help.
That'll take care of that problem.
All right, I mentioned that the exterior stairs will need to have handrails. All right, same thing with that campus. We didn't show pictures of it, but there'll, there'll be lights all around the school on 24-foot poles with concrete stanchions. Rooftop units, same thing for the middle school. All right, no pictures of this, but now we're getting into. All right, no pictures of this, but now we're getting into the high school. This is still part of the Phase Two and will be bid out April fourteenth. But we were talking about moving those administrative offices that are here over to the high school. And we don't, we have drawings, but we don't have pictures. And we did show you that at the last board meeting. So that bid will be coming up soon. We're doing some work in the art rooms. We, we're taking what was the old study hall and we're blowing up part of the wall out and connecting to the classroom next door because the art teachers need a lot of square footage. They need a bigger space. So we're taking the, that art room will be, including a new window in that space so that the students, when they're in there, can look out and do some of their drawing and things that they do in the art room. And we're adding some, some kilns, we're adding some, a spray painting area or a graphic arts area. And that's going to be a total upgrade in those art, of both art rooms. And it will be very nice when it's finished. Okay, Room 109 was an SSR room and that's a picture of that as you come in the door. That will be turned into guidance offices. So in order for us to make the move of those administrative offices that are in this building, we've gotta take that room that you can see in the doorway there is Room 109. That will be separated out and made into, into the guidance offices. That's all part of Phase Two that is going to be bid coming up here soon. All right, Phase Three. So we're now getting into the other part of the work here. And this is where we have to start having the discussion. That's the present weight room. And one of the proposals possibly could be that as you, this is right outside the gym door. That's a possibility of the location, one of the locations that the weight room could be put in. We already got the pricing for the building as a preliminary idea, but that's just very basic. So that was a two thousand nine hundred square foot weight room that was replacing the weight room that we had. That allows that music room renovation to take place. So this work would start in September.
So you're looking at about three thousand square foot just around it?
Just a small, yeah. And that would be the small version of it, if that's what we wanted to do. And that would be a possible location.
You're gonna have to brick it and everything else too, so which is-
Yeah. And, and the, the architect's coming this Wednesday. And they've got an idea of how that could be connected to the locker rooms and save us some money possibly in a corridor connection. So that we might be able to cut down on costs. We're going to need to look at what their proposal is, what it looks like. I'll send that out to the board so that you can look at it and give us your ideas.
Why is that one, why could that not start until the fall? Not a summer project?
By the time, they, they haven't done the, we don't have the drawings yet to them. We're working on where it's going to be located. And then they've gotta get all the drawings put together, then they've gotta go out to bid. So by the time we get through all of that, it's going to take some time. This is a, this is a relatively minor one, but why we're doing this work, we've got forty, as old as the building as the scoreboards are. And scoreboards are relatively inexpensive. We've done a lot of work to the gym. As long as we're doing all this work for a very inexpensive cost, we might as well bring those scoreboards up to par. And so that could be packaged into the deal. That one to me is just a kind of a side light that we don't need to have much, too much discussion on. We've always planned to do this music room renovation. So this is a, this is a given, that this is going to be part of the project. And so that music room with all of that storage that's going on throughout the back there, that will all be renovated, there'll be new areas for the music storage. The weight room will have-
Be gone?
It will be gone and part of the music wing. And that will give us additional storage and it will just create a whole nice circulation for the band and give us a lot of options.
That, it would also, would it reflect, affect the drama department as well as part of that or no?
Well, we have, that, that's part of the, the drama department is really the auditorium.
Okay.
And that's coming up in the next slide and that's going to have to be part of the discussion.
Okay.
Well, actually, it's the slide after this. This is part of an option. If you're looking right outside of the hall, if you're looking at the hallway on the west end of the library and the way that we priced out this part of the renovation was to have glass that was going to, to come down in these, actually in this area and this area and then in the front. And that was going to be more of a, a media area space for the students that they could have a, a broadcast journalism, a, a TV station so to speak, where they would do a lot of their media-type events and just be an open space, more like a senior lounge is now, where they could come in there and it would be a much more user-friendly environment for students. We have that priced out at four hundred thousand dollars right now. We have to think whether or not we want to dedicate that much money and that much work to that space or dedicate that, those dollars towards doing either more with music, more with the weight room renovation? This is a discussion we need to have. More with an auditorium renovation? Our seats in the auditorium are getting bad. They're original. They're really not in bad shape for the number of years that they've lasted because if you go into a lot of other auditoriums, I think we've done extremely well. Our students and our community have been very respectful actually of the space and I think it's been good. But that's another area that we need to think about, what we're going to do to dedicate the dollars in this phase. So this is the final phase and this is what we need to think about. Finally, I've talked with the city. There's not a lot of money, there's no money available for the city to help us with the transportation garage. We presently have this transportation garage built. And I don't think that if the city can help us in any way financially, we need to think about just staying there, keeping it where it's at. But I can tell you that the parking lot has always been an issue because there's a lot of potholes, a lot of icing that goes on and goes. You can see that it's an issue there. And I think that we need to take a look at some drainage. So I think we should bid this out either way. Let them to do some preliminary estimates as to what that drainage would cost and get some pricing back for this because that's just a safety maintenance issue that we might be able to get done at a, at a relatively low cost.
So we know that the bus garage is gonna stay there for some time now?
If the city has no money and they can't help us and we've got seventeen bays for those garages to duplicate that, I don't think it's going to be cost-effective for us to, to do that. And my, that would be my recommendation is to just stay. Because we can dispatch from there just fine. And it's not that far from our campus. And with that in mind, just put a little bit of money into the drainage, make sure that that's flowing properly. It's not a safety issue. This is an overview. There, here's the track, here's the field house for the football field. This is a possibility of what to do with this space. We talked about storage. We talked about using this space right off of this parking lot. And I think that Mr. Rice has an idea that he wants to talk to us about for that space as well.
Different spot.
You're right, that was actually farther, farther down. Yeah, and that's actually over here, right?
Yeah, it's just, one of the thoughts was, you know, we're looking at potentially putting a weight room in. And right now, we don't have locker room facilities for soccer, baseball, softball. They gotta cross the street to get to that. No bathroom facilities are even closed for those games. And so, you know, one of my thoughts was to potentially put the weight room, I wish I would've printed this large, directly behind the football. Basically, if you take a look where the base, the varsity baseball stadium is, you've got the drawing as a board everybody here. But put it in behind where the, the press box is. And then you would have parking, little additional parking there, which is always needed for games, specifically handicap parking for people coming, you know, to the home games. What that's currently used for. You could have restrooms there for, you know, the soccer parents and the softball parents and the baseball parents. In, in a facility, you know, frankly, last year at the football game, we had to evacuate our football stadium. We had nowhere to go. And this could have been a place that would've been very close for people to go to.
Because of that, because of the weather.
Yeah. We had a really bad storm come through, we literally had to evacuate the, the whole football stadium. And, you know, we could've evacuated, you know, the majority of the fans into that, that type of center.
Sean, would, would you mind turning the lights back on? I think we'll be able to see this good enough if we need to run back through some of the slides. But so in this final phase, we've got some decisions to make. The bid came in a lot better than we thought. We had at least eight hundred thousand dollars that would come back to us that we weren't counting on from that bid. Is that pretty accurate, Ryan?
All of that and even more.
Yeah, I mean conservatively, we had eight hundred thousand dollars come back to us. If you wanted to take that four hundred thousand dollars and add, and not get as ornate with that library renovation or not do anything with the library renovation, right there, you're looking at one point two. And if we had to stretch it a little bit more, we probably can do better. And that's not touching any of our, our capital improvement dollars. None of that money would be touched at this point. We're doing this just with the twenty point five million dollar budget that we have. So we need to think about how we're gonna dedicate dollars. Do we want to do a fifty percent? Do we wanna dedicate fifty percent of it towards doing some renovation of that auditorium? And fifty percent of it towards building a larger weight room?
Well, I think the weight room would still stay very close to the size we're talking about. But you would just put a bathroom facility, no showers required, just, you know, for boys and girls, restrooms. Because they're kinda needed in that area right now. And then, you know, ideally, you know, I'd like to see, because you can do very inexpensively a steel structure that could attach off of that, you know, for, you know, you know, I've got a picture of it here I found online, very, very affordably, much more affordably than building anything we're building locally. I mean, you're talking sixty thousand dollars to build some of these steel structures. And then you just put some astroturf in there. Because right now, baseball, softball, all those, you know, teams are all using that gym, which is ultimately the things that are tearing up those facilities.
Yeah, and I jokingly said that Mr. Dawson would've scolded me, but that's not what it's all about. It is a problem that if we're hitting baseballs in that gym and we're using it for other multiple-purpose things. Most schools these days have some sort of an auxiliary gym at the high school level that are connected to it.
Yeah.
This would be our opportunity right now with extra dollars to dedicate toward more space. But we're gonna have to decide exactly how much. Once again, do we take half, do we split that eight hundred thousand dollars in half and do four hundred thousand of it towards the auditorium? And four hundred thousand dollars added on to the money that we already had dedicated toward three thousand square foot? Ryan, do you remember what the cost was that we had dedicated towards two thousand nine hundred square foot? I thought it was four hundred and sixty thousand.
So I figured about that.
Yeah, I think that we were paying two hundred dollars a square foot. Or no, maybe it was close to six.
No, I think you're right, two hundred. I thought it was two hundred, so I'm voting for new construction.
But the benefits of, of putting some type of facilities over there are pretty significant, you know? Regardless, it's something we've, we almost need a bathroom facility over there anyhow. I just, due to the amount of sports that are over there, it's very difficult to-
Mr. Rice, you're talking more about a field house.
Potentially, yeah. A, a barn-type field house, something that would be a steel structure. But the, the actual weight room itself would be-
Attached.
Attached.
Right.
More of a, a block, something more safer. That would be kind of a block structure.
So is that the cost that you said you have? I mean, in order, I think in order to make a decision on that, how much to put where, you need, you know, figures of what you just got lost. And, and a lot of it though is gonna depend on materials. What, what we have to make sure that we're doing is comparing apples to apples in, in some of this comparison. What Mr. Rice is talking about is a different type of-
Totally different, yeah.
Structure.
No-
What the architect was proposing was that there was gonna be a block, a block-building weight room that was going to be a split-face block.
Yeah, plus brick around it.
Yeah, it would, it would match basically current construction of what's at the high school.
Right.
And what you're talking about is, is something different.
So a lot, lot less expensive. I mean, so I'm, I'm, what I'm thinking is what we were looking at spending on just the weight room alone with block plus brick is gonna be less expensive to do something like this as a, a field house.
And here's a whole nother issue that we really haven't touched on either. If, if you really wanna look at our facilities and how things are laid out, our wrestling room is not really a wrestling room. We're walking up to the second floor of a add-on facility and that really accentuates the need for a field house or, or something larger than what we were intending on building.
Yeah, but, you know, I can remember back in the day when we had a bunch of kids, that's a pretty big wrestling room. So, I mean, with, you know, the problem you have is the mats are like rock now in that room. I don't know if you've wa, even walked on them, that's a real issue. That, that would be the only, I, I think the wrestling room in itself, the laundry facilities based upon the size of our team is-
It's okay.
More inadequate, yeah. I mean, even if we grew, I mean, I was here when we had a freshman, a JV and a varsing wrestling team and we were in that room. So.
I think, at least what I'd like to see is kind of a stack-up of, if you could do it, Ryan, like a stack-up of, of the original estimates compared to where our bids came in and how this opportunity came about. And then, and then beyond that, what are the, you know, the things that you just went through, Phil? Maybe some, some options and choices that we could kinda, you know, this, you know, some of the things you went through, what we think it might cost and, and try to piece something together that-
Yeah, the green, that's, that's, that will be Green Space's job to come back to us and give us an approximate price. If we say to them, we want a price for the renovations of the auditorium now. So before they go through with all of these thirty-five-page to forty-five-page drawings with all the mechanicals in them, all the engineering, they're gonna do just what you said. They're gonna give us, they're gonna give us a ballpark figure of what that's gonna cost. And that's Green Space's job.
And they're always really high with that in every case.
That's right. And that's why the bidding has been coming out as good as it has because they usually estimate high and then we get the, the bid back and we've done well.
Right.
And it depends though, a lot, a lot of this that we're finding, as Ryan knows, he talked to somebody in Wellington and they're building a school there. A lot of it depends on the, on the architects and on the teams and on, on the construction firms that you have and the fact that they're being accurate in their estimates because they're building over there and they're way over budget.
Yeah, they, I was talking to the superintendent this morning and he, he said that they've estimated about forty million for a, I assume a K-12 facility. And when they, the bids, and when everything came in, it was like forty-one and a half million. So they had to go back through and decide what they wanted to cut out of the project. And he kinda congratulated us on, on- And he kinda congratulated us on how... What were we doing to get our bids to come in so much lower than estimates?
Well, a lot of it, though, has to do with the original estimates and them being accurate, and really taking a walk around to know what goes into the preliminary bid. Not the preliminary bid, but the preliminary pricing. The... You better have a good team of people that know approximately what the prices are, and so far, knock on wood, they've done a really good job. So I guess what we need to hear from you tonight, in order to move forward, is let's make a list of everything that you want to have priced out. I'm hearing we've got music room renovation. And I didn't show the details up there, but you've got rigging, stage lighting, curtains.
Okay, so you're talking the auditorium.
It includes a complete renovation.
Auditorium, right?
I think we should get the pricing of the complete renovation of the auditorium, and then work back.
All of the pieces.
I agree.
Right? So everybody's good with that. So that will be one.
And if we could list, like, for example, and say that the curtains themselves are okay, you know? I don't know.
Yeah, we could work backwards.
Somewhere, somewhere, yeah.
We'll work backwards. We'll talk with the music team. We'll get their input, and we'll decide, perhaps, when the pricing comes back, well, we could do this, or we don't want... We don't need to do that.
Right.
All right, so music is one. The parking lot in the transportation area, I think we should get the pricing for, and see what that will cost us.
Is that drainage and gravel, then, Phil?
Yeah, I think let them price the asphalt, too. It doesn't hurt. Just give us a ballpark figure of what that would cost. We don't necessarily have to do it, but what could happen if they give us that price, and then, how much gravel will it take to build a better base than what we already have?
And please don't use this to scale. This is just something I kinda threw together, just to give you a visualization of what I was... What we had talked about, Phil, and on.
All right, so the third thing that we have to look at is the weight room. And are we just going to call it a weight room? Because the baseball coach, as an example, has come in and said, "Hey, if we can do it, can we put a batting cage in it?" A batting cage has to be a minimum of 70-foot long, 14-foot wide, and 12-foot ceilings. So that could go into the fieldhouse.
This is where I'd go with this versus...
Right.
I mean, it wouldn't be as fancy attached, but it would have...
So you could do that in there?
Absolutely, positively, without a problem.
I was telling Phil at one of my previous districts, we ended up building a fieldhouse behind our high school complex, and it was. It was a brick for the locker rooms, coach's room, laundry room, but then the rest of it was the steel side.
Keystone did the same thing. They throw wrestling in there during certain periods, and, you know, as if they need to use it for wrestling, they can throw mats in there if they have to.
And they built it for under $200,000, so...
That's my point. It's huge, and it's cheap. So that's the big advantage of that type of structure.
All right, so we're gonna list it as a fieldhouse, and the fieldhouse, though, is gonna have bathrooms and locker rooms, right?
I wouldn't call... I wouldn't say locker rooms. I'd say very small locker rooms. There's baseball, soccer, they take all their stuff with them. They need to drop it off, and, you know, big enough to put stuff in there, but...
Okay.
And I would think, yeah, you need a weight room area, you need bathrooms, and if anything, you would need equipment storage. I don't know that you need really locker room facilities.
Yeah.
You would probably need equipment storage more than anything, and then you would want parking to support those Sailor Way area fields.
So are... Yeah, that's a good question, then. Are we looking at expansion of parking that's there?
If... Even if you didn't do... I mean, like, Dave's got a parking lot depicted on this photo here, but even if you didn't do that, I think the stretch of along that roadway, the stretch between, say, the roadway and the soccer fence, it'd be nice if you could throw something down there, just make that...
I wish I wouldn't have put that block there. If you would take a look there, there's cars parked all over in that grass, almost up to where that building is.
I mean, when people go to soccer games or softball games, a lot of times, they park in the grass. Now, for softball, they can still park in the Sailor Way parking lot, but for soccer, they pull right up the road and use the grass.
So, but at a minimum, you're gonna have to gravel that, right?
Yes.
So we'll call it a gravel parking lot.
That's what I would do for right now, absolutely. I mean, that would be plenty sufficient.
All right, so we'll call that a gravel parking lot.
And the only thing we're moving is you're moving four-track, just shot-in discus. We're gonna have to find a spot for shot-in discus.
Yeah, you'd have to try to find a hole for that.
Not in the hallway anymore?
Oh, yeah, so...
All right.
You could almost do it with the fieldhouse.
I had listed on here, storage, but the question would be, if you could do that fieldhouse, a combination of adding enough and making it big enough to do some storage, maybe you could kill two birds with one stone.
Right, absolutely. And that's why I put a little storage, a little area that would be kinda off of the... You were talking in inexpensive steel, I mean, this is affordable to build.
Yeah, being where that it's located, it's... To build that type of structure is more feasible than... Because aesthetically, you don't have to worry about it as much.
Nothing, exactly.
All right, and am I missing something, Ryan? There was one more item, I thought. Music, transportation, fieldhouse, oh...
We gotta keep in mind, this is a wish list. This is not a necessity, so, but if... But the reality of it is, we do need a weight room. So if we do attach it off the school, we're getting close to this number.
And the original 2,900-square-foot weight room attached to the school, what were the dollars allocated toward that, do you recall?
It's two... It was $200 a square foot, so it was almost $600,000.
So it might be a wash or better.
I guarantee we saved money on this fieldhouse, without a doubt, including storage, including parking.
And have more.
And have tripled the room. Quadrupled the room.
All right, so the last one that we'll price out, we've already priced it out. We've got $400,000 dedicated toward that, is the media center. That was already in our budget.
My only concern is this is something we're really not doing in a heavy way right now, so...
The media center?
Yeah.
For that amount of money.
Yeah, so I'd love to see this.
That was an extra, that if we were able to have it...
Our music department brings a lot of money for this school district, and so does drama.
Right. That was like the last item on the list.
There's upgrades that need to be done in that area that, you know, that affect the entire community when they come in for a meeting, so...
Here's what we're gonna need to do, though. Once I give them these six items, and they give us the preliminary pricing on this, we're going to have to come up with the decision, a firm decision, on what we're going to do, because once they start those 35-to-45-page drawings, there's no going back. And we... That's where we'll lose. So we have to decide exactly, once we get that pricing back, which we need to have first, then we'll need to get back together and say, "Okay, here's the way it came out, now what do we do?"
I think the fieldhouse steel structure stuff is a no-brainer. There's so many companies now that do those types of things. It'll be really easy to estimate those, that type of structure. Obviously, we'd wanna put cement on the inside, you know, and possibly a little bit, you know, turf or something now, but that would be it.
Well, the architects will be here on Wednesday and Thursday, and they're gonna do a walkthrough, and you said you'd be in town, so if you wanna walk through, and you're more than welcome to come and give a description of what you think that you'd like. Shelley, you're familiar with the music department, and if you'd like to be there to discuss that aspect of it, you're welcome to come, too.
Yeah, I'd like to come over with that as well.
We're probably gonna have to do that on Wednesday, because Thursday, we've got the game, and we're gonna need to work around that. All right, well, that gives me direction. Sorry that took as long as it did, but I don't know how else we could've done it. That concludes my report.
Good, thank you. All right, now on to item nine, the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Have to read it?
As listed.
As listed, thank you.
I'll second. That's White's consent.
Any discussion on anything on there?
I'm fine with Grant.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Habermuth?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dennis?
Yes. Do you wanna do... Move on down to dates first, or...
Yeah, probably a good idea.
Do that, okay. The next item, we're gonna skip on down to number 12, the date and location of upcoming board meetings. We have Monday, April 14th, Monday, May 12th, Monday, June 9th, and Monday, July 14th. I have a conflict with the 14th of July.
July 14th.
I don't know if we wanna deal with that now, or as we get closer.
Well, we don't have Dale, so let's just put that off.
So we can get a little closer.
Yeah.
But let's look at it, though. I mean, the sooner we get that done, the better. What are your thoughts? Before or after? Well, before would be pretty close to the 4th of July.
It's a week of the 4th, I wouldn't do that.
Yeah, you have a 4/21st.
Yeah, okay, so let's...
Is your conflict that whole week, or is it...
No, just that day. I mean, we can make it Tuesday or Wednesday the week, too.
Okay. All right, so we'll just put that on an email to the group and...
Okay. All right, we wanna do public participation, then?
Yeah, I agree.
All right, bless you. Backwards now to item number 11, public participation. So after we've gone through the treasurer's report, superintendent's report, anybody in the audience like to address the board?
None of you guys? You've seen all these great ideas we have, right? All right.
Any suggestions?
All good? All right, thank you. And now, I guess we have two item elevens. Recommend resolution to move into an executive session for the purpose of matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes.
I'll move.
Second?
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mr. Habermuth?
Yes.
And Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you for saying it.
That's all right.